Got it? Meeting's ordered on Monday, August 21st at 6:00. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, in attendance is Ward 1, Dr. Cottney.
Yes.
Number 2 is Dave Cornford, he's new. Free Glenn Romero and absent is Matt Toffrey. And also Ms. Wiley. Willie? Willie Wiley and myself. Okay. First order of business is Mr. Gary Willahart, owner of the property common known as Free 11 Terrace, has made an application for temporary use of an RV during the new construction of his primary residence. RV permit will allow occupancy for 100 days. Are you here?
Yes.
Want to come up? Welcome, just state your name and just review what I just said, I guess, tell us what you want to do.
Gary Willoughby, we're building a house at 311 Terrace Avenue.
Okay.
We plan on staying if we could in an RV as we built. That's our big plan.
Okay. We all have some questions?
You've got your building permit and all of that?
Yes, we have a building permit, foundation is in, or do you want to subfloor?
Foundation is in, you said?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's a prerequisite, so.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And you have like, I passed over there and I can see it's already rolling and all, that's great, glad to have more people coming here. You have like your contract and all, do you have any idea what the completion date is for your house or?
No, I'm a carpenter updated myself.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that's the only thing, only thing I wanted to bring up, I mean, I think it, I don't think there should be any problem with people staying in their RVs while they're building. I wished, I would have, could have done that when I was building my house, I would have loved to stay there too, but I just think we need to, you know, the deal is, we're not supposed to be living in RVs here, but I think getting a waiver to be able to do it while you're doing construction, I think that's fine. I just think we need to probably do something like we did this, the last time this came up about maybe have some progress review to see that it's not going to be a three-year project, you know, something like that. I mean, it, because the rules are we're not really supposed to be able to live in RVs. I think being in your RV while you're building is certainly understandable and I think that's great, I don't have any problem with that, but I do think we need to kind of see that the progress is happening, maybe have something written up as okay, but we do need to keep the project moving and have the house completed, you know?
Do you really anticipate it being done in the 180 days? I mean, is that your goal?
Yeah, I figured eight months or a month or so.
Okay.
Yeah, you're pretty close, yeah. You know, I mean, if you go, you know, and if you go over a little bit, I mean, you probably, you gotta come back and apply again, but I do think what we've done before, we've had someone recently that we looked at that it's been going on and on, so we said, okay, now, this is great, we don't mind doing it, but we want some progress review by Josh, could maybe, you know, just take a look at it, say, okay, hey, you know, it's not meant to live in forever, it's meant to while you're doing your construction.
All right, well, I'll suggest why don't you just make that as part of your motion?
Okay.
Is it a trailer or a motorhome?
It's a fifth wheel.
Fifth wheel. So it'd be like, we're in storm season right now, it'll be easily hooked up to get up.
Good point, good point, you want to be able to get up and move.
We already ran from a wildfire industry.
The sewers there, you can tap right into the sewer?
Yeah, we have sewer water, we have all those permits done.
Okay.
Water taps are set. This is my full-time thing, so I'll be there every day working on it.
Bet.
RV's fine, but it's not.
Yeah, I have one, I don't want to live in it.
It's great verification for the days.
So you anticipate once you do the house to store the fifth wheel there?
No.
Oh?
No, it'll be stored somewhere else.
Where are you going to put it on the property?
My intentions are up on the side of the home, on the right-hand side, it's a wooded lot, there's nobody living there, and then the house will block it from the neighbors. So the place you'll be able to see is directly in front of the house, you'll see the front of the lot.
Yeah, you really don't have many neighbors there right now anyway, right?
No, and right now it's a rental week.
Oh, okay, that's what the other house is.
Try to turn it down?
Yeah, week by week or day by day, so. Start working at 6:00, so I don't know how much of the case we're getting.
I'm, like I said, I guess the only, only motion I would make is that we do try to have Josh, you know, keeping track of it, that, you know, to let him know, I mean, we don't want to turn it into a two or three-year project like we've seen, you know, but I mean, obviously, I think six months is a pretty good figure, and if you might not quite make it, but you're probably going to be close by six months, you know, and just have to apply again for another waiver to live there for another few months.
Okay, motion by 3, seconded by?
2.
2 or 1?
1. I'm looking at the number 2, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's vote, 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
Passion Adams like 3 to nothing, thank you. We are just recommendation and it goes to the Alderman, which is going to meet, what, first Tuesday after Thanksgiving? I mean, after Labor Day?
Yeah, September, yeah, so we're closed on Monday for Labor Day, but they will be having our meeting on Tuesday, first Tuesday of September.
So just be sure to come back for that, shouldn't be any problem. Where are you moving from, by the way?
St. Louis.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's right, that's right. 5.
Why?
You watch the news?
We were going to wait until my, our daughter graduated high school and she said she wanted to move, so we had, we drove all the coast from here all the way up to North Carolina, started here and drove all the way up there, and we vacationed all along the coast, and we chose Waveland.
Great, think you picked a good spot.
Nice way back community, well, welcome.
Well, good luck with everything, hope it goes good, all right.
All right, number 3, discussion of proposed change recommendations to the current zoning ordinance and a review of the comprehensive plan. Just to give everybody a little background, a couple of months ago, Commissioner Chad Whitney suggested that we look at the comprehensive plan and make sure that whatever our recommendations are sort of coincide with what's recommended in the comprehensive plan, which was updated in 2009. I doubt it's been looked at, as I've said many times since then, but some prior boards, we went through the goals for the residential side, which I think starts on what page?
7. 7.
Yeah, and as I included in the email, we had added a few things, some short-term, some long-term, like, well, short-term would be a goal for the number of trees that are planted mainly by the Keep Waveland Beautiful. They have averaged somewhere around 35 to 40 a year for the last couple of years. And the Orion, Orion Report was something that the city commissioned to study Highway 90, and they made a report, gee, about almost a year ago, and I think it needs to be followed up on. Some long-range things, as I mentioned, are subsurface drainage, subsurface electrical, and.
Wait, I didn't understand, you said the drainage or?
Drainage.
The singles.
Drainage and electrical was together?
Well, not together, but no, yeah, but both of them being subsurface, two separate entities, but.
No, I meant, okay, like the item though, I mean, it's talking about drainage and, and
Yeah, the goal would be to, you know, put as much of a guttering system on the ground and ultimately to do the same with the electrical.
Okay.
Before, before I go on, Dr. Cottney said that she had had similar things when you were on the educational thing, and, and what they did is, is they broke it up into some short-term things that everybody got a reminder of daily, and, and so it was fresh in their mind, and therefore it was followed up on. You know, unfortunately, so many things get recommended, just like this comprehensive plan, and then boom, that's it, never thought of. The Orion Report, I mean, you know, that was a good report a number of months ago. Only thing that I know that was followed up on that was the signage, some letters were written to the commercial entities telling them of those that were not in compliance that they needed to correct it. But there were, as someone said, there were a lot of other low-hanging fruit out there that could be addressed and.
And that's in the report, you know, just different things in the report that maybe we could focus on and try to do something about?
So maybe, Jean, you need to, with your convenience, get us all copies of that.
The Orion.
Orion Report.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and, and again, you know, sort of the way I look at our, what we're talking about here is we're, one of our functions is to facilitate bringing these issues up so that the board, the Alderman will address it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And I will, at the end, I will also give you an update of what they have done with some of our recommendations since then. So that's all of a background. We're certainly welcome to any more suggestions y'all might have from the residential side, if you do have any more to it. As I say, we had, we had spent a couple of meetings going through it, and, you know, a lot of these things in this comprehensive plan, you know, pertain to fallout after Katrina, and there were some things they recommended that have been approved, done, continuation of the bike path out on the beach, the, what, the gazebo back over here next to the ground zero. There was also a discussion of, the city does own some green space, you know, they're, they're really involved with their budget, so they don't have the time to look, but, you know, there is something we could, we could follow up on, try to get a list of what property they own that is just undeveloped, and perhaps turn some of it into parks or just, you know, green space or just a pathway, walking path or something, you know? Of course, all this takes money, we know, but anyhow, that was just, you know, some of the things that were in there. The, the report is, you know, what, 60 or 75 pages, and it does get a little redundant as it goes through it, yeah.
It's really worded.
You know, I guess they have to justify their fee, pardon my saying that, but that's, that's what it is.
So the general idea with, what y'all had started talking about is taking, taking this, this plan and kind of bringing up a few points that maybe should be focused on and try to actually, you know, do something about them and make some positive improvements.
And with first off, we'd make a recommendation to the board and let them, you know, have their input in it, and then if they do, and, and let's say if we broke it down into some short-term and long-term, then in a short-term, something we can do in the next year or two, and just follow up on it. You know, so many, as I say, so many things get proposed, but follow-up just falls by the wayside.
And, and it's going to fall by the wayside unless somebody's appointed to do it.
Yeah, and so I'm appointing us to do it.
No, I mean, the actual people that's going to do the, the physical work.
Yeah, but if we make enough, if we bring it up and bring it up and bring it up, then maybe that'll.
Do we actually have a list from, from earlier on when y'all talked about? Do we actually have a list or no, of things that the group, you know, I mean, whoever was here before, the group that was involved before, have they come up with a list of things that we should be focusing, you know, that they want to focus on?
Well, as I say, the, if you look for the goals here, they pretty much accepted them, there were one or two changes, and then the, the list that I had were the things that were added for discussion. Jean will get a chance to look through the, the.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm just, the only thing.
Minutes of that and then present it back to us.
Right.
Okay?
Well, that's what I'm mentioning.
In the meantime, if there are any other things y'all were thinking about.
Well, as you said, I mean, if things have already been discussed, some may have already been like, no, we're not going to do that, I mean, I, I don't know, and I know he doesn't know either, and, you know, what's been discussed already that maybe we don't want, you know, okay, we're not.
Does that report, was that report a good place to start?
That's, yeah, those being the minutes, I am still working on them, it was a two-hour meeting where everything was going back and forth, so it's taking me a little while.
It's going to take you a little bit, okay.
It's taking a minute to get them all typed up correctly, and I'm, I'm checking and double-checking and making sure everything is okay and, and listed correctly, so as soon as I have those, which should be by the end of the week, you'll have a copy of that so that we know what I recommended.
That'd be great, that'd be a place to start, a good baseline that.
Otherwise, we're going to do all that over again.
Yeah, we don't want to say the same old things if it's already been discussed, right?
And since this was written so long ago, we need, I mean, we need to know what has been accomplished in each one of these goals, and once we know what has accomplished, we don't have to focus on that as much as the things that have not been taken care of. I think that would be important for us to know, has the city maintained the land or residential atmosphere, you know, just a little comment from that department to tell us, what have you done already, and what do we need to focus on doing for the next time?
Just like in goal number four.
Wait, no, wait.
It says, page.
Where is that, that's in?
Page 8. It says, policy 4B, send a biannual newsletter to existing and former second-home residents communicating Waven rebuilding milestones in community events. Certainly that has never been done.
Okay.
But again, you know, that's something, I mean, that's, the more communication you have with people, the more transparency, the more, you know, people might take an interest in, in things, you know?
But then you.
You know, like number 5 is just, you know, develop quality residential subdivision, residential communal housing for persons and families in all income tax range, yada, 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 I mean, that's sort of, my, pardon my expression, that's sort of fluff, okay? You know? That's just, that's filler, I should say, I'd say, but, you know, update zoning, well, we're certainly working on that. And like I said, we could, you know, glee some of these things and then, you know, just, we'll, we'll just take some and we'll just follow up on them. Would be my thought. And so like I said, we had come up with those additional goals that I enumerated, there are probably some more that, that she will find in the, in the minutes, but it's, at least it's a start. So I don't know whether anybody.
I just know when I was reading through it, some of the things, my thoughts were, well, have they done this, have they done any of this stuff? If they haven't done it, then is this something that need to be done? I was, those are the kinds of questions that came through my mind. I, I just think that we can sit here and think about what we want to do or what we want to add to this, but we need to know what's already completed, and that would help me a lot. And do, and do we have any seeing?
Well, I think, you know, I don't remember everything on it, but I know, you know, one thing in here was, as I mentioned earlier, the walkway out front, and that's certainly been done. And somewhere along here, I think they envisioned that from firehouse to the ground zero was going to be all green space, well, that obviously can't happen because there's a house between us. But, what do they call that, the town square now? You know, they have the gazebo bandstand in there, some plantings, some walkways, some foliage, et cetera. That's sort of an ongoing thing. I know at one time there was actually, what, talk of doing some outdoor movies at one point. Certainly the technology is there fairly inexpensive nowadays, could be something we could promote. You know, like number 8, create amenities to attract young families, I mean, ensure that they're good schools, well, we obviously have no control over that. Again, some of this stuff I think are great ideas, but, but nothing that anybody can control. So I would like it to focus on things that can be, you know, be accomplished. And, and as I say, obviously, one of them is to pursue the Orion Report, and it dealt mainly with, with Highway 90, there's some discussion here about beautification, I know they recommend it somewhere, create a tree canopy along Old Spanish Trail Nicholson and Waven Avenue to provide an attractive ride for people traveling to the Coleman District. Again, this would be really in coordination with the Keep Waveland Beautiful Committee who will, in the past, has, has planted like all these great myrtles out here. During the year, maybe the Miss, I'm not, I'm not sure, it might be the Miss, the Extension Service had probably close to 200 trees, oak trees and cypress, I think, maybe magnolias, and they opened it up at Keep Waveland Beautiful, took about 15 up, and then if anybody wanted one, put them on their property, that was available. Some of those trees got planted in the, in the green space right over here. So in a way, and then from our tree ordinance, if we get the Alderman to finish that up, you know, when, when a tree is, a protected tree is turned, is permitted to be cut down, there's a formula for how many trees they have to replace it with, and that'll, will just be a conduit and that'll go straight to the Keep Waveland Beautiful. The house right over here on, what is this, Bourgeois, what's this street right here, Bourgeois? There are three trees you want to cut down, and replacement plan was for about nine trees, and he went out and bought the trees, and their Keep Waveland Beautiful has them and will wait till the cooler months to plant them, so.
So what, which do we have, and I know this, I know you, you had kind of mentioned it to me about, you know, working with this comprehensive plan and trying to make some suggestions from this committee and see where it goes from there. How, I don't know, I don't know how far along that has gone as far as do we have a plan, like, you know, do we want to set a date for a meeting that maybe we can get together again and, and just say, okay, we got to highlight, you know, three or four different things that we want to focus on and try to, you know, do we have a plan of when we want to be able to say, okay, this is what we need to focus on?
So that's the better.
Or does each person take a separate piece and say, this is what I'm going to help focus on and that's what I'm trying to figure out the best way to do it?
The first thing I think is, is to say perhaps review these goals, do we get her?
See what we already have.
What was discussed prior?
Yes, I think that's a good start.
We'll look at all of those topics, agree that they're worthwhile or not, some of these perhaps are not anymore worthwhile, they're already in here, and then have a consensus, okay, these are the, the goals we'd like to see implemented into the plan, and break them down into different timeframes, and then that recommendation goes to the Alderman and they say yes or no, then it comes back to us, and it will be our responsibility to follow up. And it then requires them to appoint somebody or further action than we, we follow up, and we make that recommendation to the board. We, we have no enforcement.
Right.
Methodology, we're just keeping our finger on things, okay? That's the way I see it, I mean, you know, the, this was all proposed by Chad, and he's not here anymore, but, you know, we're not here to rewrite the thing, okay? I think we're just here to take out some things that, that are actionable, you know, the grandiose idea of where we ought to be in 25 years is not our, our purview at all.
Right.
Okay? I'd like to get it down to where we are next year. Something we can accomplish, or have accomplished, I should say.
So I know right now, you know, like you said, we, we talking about residential right now, but, and then there's also the commercial end of, you know, what the comprehensive plan for Waveland would be, which I don't even know what that is as far as the, you know, the, the current administration, the government, the mayor and, and the Alderman and all, I guess, are certainly more steering with, with their, you know, I guess what the future is there, but I guess my question is, does anyone maybe would know, or do we, do we have anything going on as far as some committee or somebody looking at a, and I know it has, it's pretty entangled because of FEMA and all, but to be able to come up with a plan to try to increase some activity on Coleman, you know, to try to get some, and I know it's, I'm not, I'm not saying it's easy by no means, but it seems like there should be some focus on trying to develop businesses to come here for the future, you know?
To back up and give you a little hindsight, when Mike was first elected, I talked to him about Coleman, anyhow, I'm not sure I hit all, I'm not taking credit for anything, a, it's a word, a, a group was formed to look at Coleman Avenue, and the group sent out letters to all of the owners as to what was holding them up.
That's a good start, yeah.
And the letters came back, there were two things that were, well, one of them was the height, we had the bill, that's FEMA, cost of insurance was there, and the then-current building inspector, and there was a lot of, people had a lot of animosity, and Josh is down with that department, so that was taken care of. And we also proposed and was approved by the Alderman, a tax incentive for development that, I don't hold me exactly to this, but if you had an existing structure and you, let's just say a quarter of a million dollars, and I might be wrong on that amount, improvement, then addition. then additional taxes, city taxes, ad lorum taxes will waive for a period of time. Okay? And there was some talk of also getting the county to agree to that. Okay? And then the third tax is the school board and I, I don't think there's much hope of that ever happening, but whatever. I'm not sure whether there was ever any formal approval by the supervisors, but we could follow up on that. Anyhow, but it pertained to Coleman Avenue. It went from terrace to St. Joseph? St. Joseph, but inside, okay? Was industrial development district.
Okay.
Okay? So that was something that was done. There are, there were some plans approved for development at the end of Coleman on the Bay St. Louis side. I haven't heard any update on that yet. He came in with a conceptual kind of idea of what he wanted and I think he had to go back to his architect to see what was feasible. And there is hopefully not, I think they came and got a permit, applied for a permit. But they couldn't. Anyhow. Didn't he build it in Bay St. Louis?
What's that?
Yeah, he did build at the, at the railroad there, as I understand it.
Yeah, so he may have gotten that project started and then once that was completed, he may come back. But he did get approved to those various places.
Yeah, it was, it was a combination condo and barns, swimming pool out there. Am I talking out of turn to mention? And then there's No, okay.
Right, but I mean, yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I think everybody, like, you know, when, when you, just that little note in here and I, I've never really seen that till we just talked about it, the note about trying to have amenities here and all for, to, for families to wanna come. And I mean, granted, you, you know, you look around, it's mostly people, you know, retiring or, or having a, a weekend place here. That's mainly what's going on at the moment, but I know you, you certainly need a more of a mix of, you know, different age groups and all too probably that you, you're wanting to attract. And I think to attract families, I think certainly we gotta focus on somehow. And I say, I don't think it's easy, I don't have the answer, but I think certainly some focus needs to be right here on this street to try to develop the downtown. We don't have a downtown Waveland.
Like they used to.
You know, where people would come in.
There was a bank and a post office and a
Like what you mentioned, I mean, I, you know, I, I come from the old West Bank of New Orleans and Old Gretna is an old spot in New Orleans that's been there forever. And the last few years that we were there, on like, when the weather got permissive, you know, fall type weather, they would have Friday night movies, Downtown Gretna. And that was amazing to see all the people come out for that, young families, older people like myself. I mean, everybody just liked coming out and, and watching a movie and all, but you had things around. You had restaurants to go to, you had coffee shops. And I know that's not, it, you know, that, that don't happen overnight, obviously. But I think it's something that
But it's one little piece of the puzzle.
Start focusing on that. Huh?
It's one little piece of the puzzle.
Yeah, I think, you know, take little baby steps and, and, and get some things in here and start attracting some.
If you do nothing, if you don't take the baby steps, then you never get across the street.
True.
You know? So that, that, that's a good, so again, we can, you know, I think we can be a voice to promote some of these things. And I, I was just thinking that a number of years ago, someone entered Waveland in a contest to get some money for a, like a Fourth of July celebration. And they got a bunch of money.
Really?
Okay, and it, this entity does maybe a dozen throughout the country. And so down at the beach, there was stage and music and a lot of fireworks. And from that, we developed the, what do you call that thing? Well, there was a committee formed to foster that. You know, it was funded the first year, but there was no money the next year. And so we went out and we got commitments from the casino and whoever and ever and ever to, to put up money that would pay for the fireworks. The city and so we
Destination Waveland.
Destination Waveland.
Destination Waveland.
I was, I was wondering where that was going. I'm like, what is he talking about?
That was
I remember now, Destination Waveland.
We went, we actually, we had just bought our property here. We weren't even in, in the building phase yet and we came to that and we were like, wow, okay.
But initially, it was all funded from the outside, okay? And then the city sort of took it over and now they just, now they're funding it, okay? Out of their coffers. The, it used to be Fourth of July.
They changed it to
They changed it to Labor Day. Personally, I think that was a mistake. You know, a lot more people here are on the Fourth of July, okay? And so we'll see how many people are here this year. Two things that I know of, one, there might be a problem with the burning van, okay?
That's true.
And St. Clair Festival, there was an incident or a threat or whatever and they postponed or canceled their
Fireworks.
Fireworks and they have in turn donated that to the city for this year, so this is very nice of them. So we'll see. So pay attention to how many people are here.
Okay.
But, and, you know, the, the first year, I mean, there, there was a ban down there. So it, it was a magnet, it brought people from New Orleans or, or, you know, wherever, Hattiesburg or whatever down here. And it's great advertising, you know, to, to see what your city's like. So again, you know, these are some of the things we can think about and promote.
Yeah, I, that's, and that, that's what I wasn't really sure, you know, what our focus was totally gonna be. I mean, I'm kinda new on there too. And, but I think, I think it all sounds, sounds great, you know, I think that's what, that's what we need to do. I was just kinda checking, oh, we all, you know, how are we gonna, we're gonna try to split this up and, and maybe try to move some of these things in front of the people that really can make the decisions.
Well, like I say, you know, I think we ought to set the, the, the big picture and then break that down into obtainable things and then keep up the good work. That's my idea. I mean, I'm just over to all sorts of suggestions. In, in talking, I'm thinking of two other things that I know have been talked in the past. The property at Highway ninety and Waveland Avenue, old
The apartments?
Yeah, no, 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 the shopping center.
Oh, yes, yes.
And, and I know Mike had, had talked to those people a long time and I think the current mayor has also talked, but now I'm hearing there prob, there might be some more problems with underground gasoline or something spilled in the ground. I know they, for a number of months, they were, you know, piping, well pointing, something like that, you know, trying to extract the underground leakage from the gasoline tanks. You know, that's, that's really beyond us. I think that's more the, I believe the mayor. And, and another suggestion, I remember someone saying a number of years ago was, you know, the entryway to the city is really six oh three and ninety. And that, you know, maybe some type of signage. What that is, an arch, you know, was someone's suggestion or something, you know, welcome to Waveland. Those are just some of the ideas I know in the past have been kicked out. And in, in signage in general, I mean, the last I looked, when you're coming from the bay, or when you go from us to, to Bay St. Louis, there's a sign that says, welcome to Bay St. Louis. When you come from the bay to us, someone has written on the back of Bay St. Louis sign, welcome to
But they, they've recently put a, a big, a Waveland sign up, I believe. Yeah, it used to be on the back of the
Right.
Welcome to Bay St. Louis, it said Waveland.
Yeah.
But now someone, they have actually put up a Waveland.
And again, and out on I-ten, you know, I think it just says, turn here to go to Bay St. Louis.
Yeah, it doesn't mention Waveland.
They're, they're little bitty things, but you know, they all add to the mosaic, you know, I think.
This seems like an easy fix. You just call the people, say, when you decide.
Just someone make a request to M. Dada, whoever's in charge of that. The, and you know, and the big attraction over here is, is the beach, which is not the city's responsibility, obviously. But in their last meeting, didn't they approve some money for some gazebo? Taking some of the Thailand money or the
I thought they talked about a grant, but the city never utilized it. So I think that they have to do some research to see what it can use the money for.
Do we get CSBG funds? Do we get CSBG funds?
That I don't know. I was talking to this Lisa.
It's community service block grant program. Gulfport gets it all the time and I used to get part of it when I was working at Gulf Coast Community Action and I worked with Karen over in Gulfport to make sure we got funding. And with that money, we did, they did a lot of different things in Gulfport with that CSBG money that comes in.
I, I think we'll have to look at their minutes, but I think at the last minute, they, at last meeting, they talked about some grant money they got from, you know, from the national, what did that program was that the Congress passed last year, billion dollars worth of thing. So there was some type of redevelopment money or something like that.
And I just, I just
But I, but I, what I remember was there was some discussion of some money, I think separate from that, maybe from the, the Thailand or the casino to build some, I think some gazebos out here or something. Again, I would think that's more the county's responsibility than the city, but I might be wrong. And I know they have, again, in, in sort of a something, they have applied to the casino people to, money to remove the piling. But I think that was a conduit, should be my opinions, anyhow, to collect the money. And it would be, once they had it, they could move it around and it was gonna go to the Marina, which is, I think, gone forever. So they've used some of that money to pay for the repairs at the lighthouse. They changed all of the railing, you know, didn't last very long.
So the piling, the pylons that, that came up as, as something to just kinda help beautify Waveland and make it more appealing from the beach?
Well, it was, when, when you go to the casino money, the money's supposed to be for water-related activities. And so that was just a topic that they could use to get the money, to get some, like apply for some money. I know the county had used a lot of that money back at McLeod Park improvements back there, which is on the Jordan, so that
And you know, the McLeod Park is really not that functional for people who actually live in Waveland. If you don't have an RV, you can't go in there. It makes no sense. I've said this several times, but anyway, it makes no sense.
Is that right off of the Texas?
Yes.
That, I've, I've seen RVs and all going back there, but I've never been there.
But Buccaneer Park is the same way. When I was growing up in Hancock County, cause I was born here, I'm one of the few people that was. And we went to Buccaneer Park all the time. That was the place where we went on Fourth of July and whenever, you know? And now, in order to get in Buccaneer Park, you gotta own an RV.
I think you can still get in.
But you can't go in there and like have a cookout and all like we used to do. You can't do that anymore. You have to have, cause and I know, I called several times, you know, trying to find out how could we have something at Buccaneer Park? Well, you have to have an RV. Well, that tells me a lot. That tells me that people who can't afford an RV can't go to the park. So it does not help Waveland at all. Because unless you, you know, I'm sorry, if I live in Waveland and I didn't already have a RV, I don't think I'd get one, cause I, we're right here at the water. You know? It just doesn't make sense that our hands are tied because we don't own RVs, so you can't go to Buccaneer Park. And this is where, I mean, our families went to Buccaneer Park every single summer, you know? But now you can't do it.
That's a state park, right?
I know it's a state, I, I've talked to the, I've talked to the governor.
Cause I'm saying, that is, that is Mississippi State.
Yeah, and I've talked to a couple of people up there in Jackson. And I said the same thing, I say, that makes no sense. Cause you know, I'm one of those that I just go all the way to the top until I get the answer. And they said, well, that's how it was approved. That makes no sense. Whoever approved it did not have the people who actually love going to Buccaneer Park in Hancock County.
It was more for tourists, what you're really saying.
That's exactly right.
Now, there is, coming this way, the old Seesong Plantation Park, where, which has pavilions for exactly what you wanna do, but it's been closed since forever. I mean, you, you were supposed to have paid a little admission to go use a pavilion, but it's closed, you know?
And is that with the, that's with the county? That's part of the county?
It's part of Buccaneer.
Oh, okay. Oh, the, the pavilion that you, you've seen, that's right, right close to the beach? It looks like it's always fenced off and
Yeah, it's always fenced off.
I never see it open.
Exactly, you can't get in, you have to have an RV.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about the RV part. I'm talking about, there's a separate pavilion that's all fenced off.
But you know what they told me, that was for the people who were there with RVs.
I just don't see how you could even use that.
Well, that's, that's
And that's why you don't see any people there.
To get into Buccaneer Park, yes.
The city used it for a couple of years for their Easter recon. They let the city use it for the Easter recon.
But they don't let regular citizens use it.
Well, no, 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 I think we're talking two different things.
Okay, if I'm going down the beach on ninety
Yeah.
Beach Boulevard, and I make that right with the
The entrance by the wave pool.
Yeah, the, yeah, the wave pool, no, not the wave pool. Before you get to the wave pool, where there is a pavilion and there is some swing sets out there, things like that.
Fenced off.
Fenced off. And you, when I called about it, I was told that I could not get in unless I had an RV.
That's ridiculous.
That doesn't seem to have anything
They went out those pavilions. They went out for birthday parties. I've seen people with blowups over there having birthday parties.
Well, I'm telling you what they told me.
Someone, either some, someone may have misunderstood your question or maybe just didn't give you the right information. But I believe what, what you're talking about is the RV park itself.
No, no, not there, not there.
But that's what I'm saying, I think that got messed up, the, you know, as far as whatever the answer they gave you
Because it was, if it was open, and we told, we, after mass every Sunday, we get, we have a little group, breakfast group, and we, we've discussed this several times, why we can't go to Buccaneer Park anymore. They said, well, you gotta have an RV. I said, well, let me call and check. I called and checked, that's what I was told. And every time I've called, I've, I've been told the same thing. We wanted to have a family reunion and have a cookout out there. You can't if you don't have it, the people have to be in an RV.
Well, I think the thing to do is call their bluff.
Yeah.
Tell them you have an RV. I, I sort of agree with, with you, I, I think
There's no, there's no
That person didn't know what they were talking about.
Yeah, there's no, there's no real, like, I mean, I've been to the RV park. I go, I, and what I'm saying is, the RV park is just like any RV park all over the country. It's set up for people to come and park their RVs and spend the weekend with their families and whatever. But that section you're talking about, that's, that's not even in, that's not even related to the park itself. There was no, there was no place to really go put an RV there.
Okay, I'm gonna check and I'm gonna record the person and I'm gonna bring it back to you. Cause I'm good at doing it.
All I'm saying is they, they maybe gave you wrong information or they missed
Oh, I'm not gonna lie.
Or misunderstanding what you're asking.
Well, tell them your friend has an RV.
Then that defeats the purpose. And you know, the, the purpose is that I think that if we live in Waveland and Bay St. Louis and Buccaneer Park is there, we shouldn't have to have an RV to go to the park.
Well, I, I mean, I, I gotta tell you, I stay in RV parks often and they're set up as that. I mean, the state must have Well, uh, I mean, I, I gotta tell you, I stay in RV parks often and they're set up as that. I mean, the state must have dedicated money. They have, they have Percy Quinn, they have, uh, Buccaneer. I don't remember all the different ones they have, and I know Mississippi, Mississippi has quite a few. But I mean, they're not, they're not set up for the communities. They're set up for people traveling in RVs.
Katrina, it was set up for the community is what I'm telling you.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's probably not the same entity anymore. It's now a
It's still all about state.
Well, it's a Mississippi State campground now, though.
That is still
You can run out those pavilions.
And, and you could, I don't think, yeah, I think they
It's not free.
I mean, I
Yeah, not free, but you can run out, yeah.
I wasn't even asking for free. I was asking to use it. She said, if you don't have an RV, you can't do it.
Well, I'm, I think I understand their position, because if you have an RV, then you're gonna be renting space and that's gonna cost money. And if you've done that, then you just don't want the whole world coming in and swimming in the pool for free.
But it's, it's
So I, I make a distinction between the RV park and the pavilion park.
Is there anyone in here that was here before Katrina and went to Buccaneer Park?
Absolutely, I did.
You did, okay.
But, but it was in an RV and
No, 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 I mean, just lived here.
No, 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 but I mean, Buccaneer's been here since before Katrina.
Right.
And I've come here many times and rented a spot to park my RV. And RVing is not like in the old days, when I'd go camping with my family, we'd go in a tent. And Percy Quinn was, my dad was upset when it got to three dollars a night. It's now, I don't know what it's probably, what about thirty something dollars a night to park an RV? And that's why, and I think that's, you know, maybe what he's saying, like, it, it, it is an RV park. I mean, it's not set up for the community.
No, it, but it was at one time.
Yeah, well.
And that's why I'm saying, I think it's unfair to people who actually live in Bay St. Louis and Waveland to not be able to go to Buccaneer Park unless you own an RV. And that is, that, that was my statement then and it's still that now, because for twenty-five, thirty years, you could go to, uh, probably before then, but yeah, I could just, when I was in junior high, we would, Fourth of July, we sheared sheep out in Hancock County, then we come, my cousins would bring us to the Buccaneer Park to have a cookout. That was our tradition of doing that. And then when I moved back here, they said, oh, you can't do that anymore. You can't, what you mean you can't? Buccaneer Park is, you have to have an RV.
I have a suggestion for you. It is election time. Talk to Brent Anderson, who's running for representative.
Oh, Brent is, oh, he knows my story?
Then, 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 then make an issue of it. At least they ought to open up the, I'm gonna call it the pavilion park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And cause they really have nothing to do with RV and that pavilion park is isolated from the RV park.
And no one is ever there.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's like it's just fenced off most of the time, but I believe that's what it is. You can rent it. But I just think, I think either someone was giving the wrong information or misunderstood the question of what area you were talking about, but probably not. But something, that just doesn't, yeah.
I've been listening about this, that Steve Seymour was on the board in Hancock County, so that tells you how long I've
That's been a while.
It's been a while. Okay, end of my story.
All right, um, six, six o'clock. The, um, we'll wait for your things. Um, there will be another meeting next Monday. Um, A, and this will be going on forever now. We have to
No, it's gotta be this Wednesday. Because I have to have the minutes to Ms. Lisa by Thursday morning, the next board agenda deadline.
Right, so next Monday?
This Wednesday.
Two days from today?
Yeah.
Why didn't we get him today?
The board meeting is not until September. They have to Labor Day, third or fourth or whatever that is. A week, a week.
So in order for the meeting on the fifth, I have to have it, yeah, we can, yeah, we can do it next Monday.
Yeah, and then, then, then you gotta give it to her by, by that Wednesday.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
By, yeah, Wednesday, by Wednesday the thirtieth, I have to have it. So I will have both sets of minutes that y'all can approve on Monday, the twenty eighth.
Yeah, we have to approve the minutes before they go to the
You want it at five?
I, I'd like it as early as possible, so if we can make it five, I know you probably can't make it for five, but if you wanna call in.
I'll call in on my drive back and I'll, yeah, okay.
That'll, that'll be fine.
You wanna split the difference? Yeah, I say, you wanna split the difference, five-thirty or, I'm making, what time do you get home? Just curious.
It
It all depends.
It, it, I mean, I'm coming from New Orleans. I've really worked till at least four and sometimes five, so it just, uh,
All right, so, all right, we will be doing that the following Monday always.
Yeah.
To approve the minutes.
Our meeting will be on the third Monday of the month, unless it's a holiday and then the schedule has to change. And then we'll have the minutes approval the next Monday before my deadline for the board of mayor.
So are we doing that at five or doing that at six?
Five, we'll make it five. Um, and then take, take a look at these goals and then also look at the, um, commercial goals. We, we sort of marked into them, because we talked about Highway ninety and of course, there's already reported, it's also Highway ninety. So it, um, I'm not sure there's really anything we would, um, and they talk about, you know, reviewing the zoning. So, you know, I don't think there's a whole lot of stuff we can, we need to address in that. We just oughta make it this all-in-one type of thing. And then ultimately, we need to get back to the zoning, um, ordinances. We had, what'd I tell you, five, five, we're, we're up to four oh six. We had made some proposed changes. Some of them were just verbiage, just clarification type of stuff. Four oh six, I think, talks about fencing. And again, I think we're just tweaking some things here.
Okay.
The Alderman, um, initially wanted our total, um, zoning request all at one. And that's why they haven't, up until recently, haven't moved on anything. I guess I will go into, um, item number four, which is comments from me. At the last, uh, Alderman meeting, a couple of things happened. First off, they, um, approved most all of our requests. Except, where they, there was one on Saint Joseph over here, where if you recall, there were, he was trying to form a bunch of interior lots. And they pretty much went along with it, but they decided that, um, the part that comes out to the street, there would be one common, if I recall, driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, which is a good idea, okay? It came in and then it would branch off. The, um, and so that was that, uh, change that they made. The other one was on, and I forget the name of the street over here, where the, um, it was a dedi- dedicated street had been, wasn't used, and they had used it as part of the, um, the property and the lady wanted to divide it into
Oh, on East Meadow.
East Meadow, okay. Uh, East Meadow comes down in L's and then right at the L, it continued as a dedicated street, um, that had been sold, I guess, to the property owners that faced this undead, this non-street. Um, there were two houses on the property and they wanted to divide it. And so it required some, you know, variances on, on the front footage. And it was tabled and then, um, Ms. Gamble talked to him and, um, I think the result was that the owner gave the property back to the city. Therefore, both houses had exposure to the
To a street.
Dedicated, a dedicated street, or the dedicated street, I should say, okay? And so it was, uh, it wasn't any L involvement, it was just straight in front. And then they narrowed it down to whatever the width was required for each one.
So they worked it out.
So that, that was resolved, you know, without our thing. They had a special meeting to talk about, um, accessory buildings. And at the accessory, what they decided to do is, we had recommended a number of, the size of a building was contingent upon the size of a land. And there were like four or five things. And I think what they decided was, they simplified it by saying, um, it can, first off, it cannot exceed, what, forty, forty-five percent of the total land, which none of them would ever. But it cannot exceed more than fifty percent of the, um, main residence. And you had to adhere to the setbacks, okay? Um, so that's what they did on accessory buildings. Then they're, then they addressed setbacks, which right now, or twenty-five front, twenty-five back, fifteen side, side. Uh, they changed the side to side to ten.
Ten.
Mm-hmm.
And the back to
They increased the rear, cause in, um, R-two and R-three, the rear is twenty. And they made it twenty-five to match the R-one. So they left the front and rear in R-one the same. So it's still twenty-five, twenty-five, but they made it ten and ten on each side.
And then they eliminated the structure being more than twelve feet at that
Yeah.
Exception. They eliminated all of that.
Right.
So that, all of that
They said accessory structures can be five and five?
Hmm? I'm sorry?
They said, or they said that, um, accessory structures have to be ten feet from the side, but they can be ten feet from the rear as well.
Yes.
Yes, and, and was really
That's right, you were here.
What I, what I was showing during, I was at that meeting and I, I, I was showing them in, uh, matter of fact, I have it right here. In, in the, the ordinances, it's weird, but they talk about all these different formulas, you know, about being, you know, fifteen foot. But then, uh, it says something about you could be within, with, you could take up five foot of that, to that would put you at ten foot. And then another sentence says you could take up fifty percent of that, which would be seven and a half foot. And then at the very end, it says, but no structure would be closer than five feet. I mean, to me, that wording is crazy. Why, why have all, and they all agreed. It seems like something that ought to be worded a lot simpler than that. That's, that's just
Yeah, that's what their, their, um, intention was, to make it simpler.
Simple.
Say, all side setbacks are ten, and accessory structure can be ten feet from the rear, um, main structure has to be at least twenty-five. Um, the accessory structure, they didn't go with the scale, but they went with maximum of nine hundred square feet. But no bigger than fifty percent of
The home.
The house, yeah, the main house. Um, and anything over nine hundred, like, if you got a two thousand square foot house and you wanna build a thousand square foot accessory structure, you have to go for a variance.
I think that was, that was some good progress, yeah.
I don't remember that part.
Yeah.
I thought it was just fifty percent, up to fifteen hundred.
No, they did a max of nine.
Okay.
So are we gonna get these policies written out and?
Yes, so whenever Ms. Lisa's done with her minutes on what their recommendations were, I'm gonna take those minutes and I have to advertise them with our next meeting for those changes. They will come to you for that meeting in September. It has to pass through y'all, because if there are any other recommendations or if there's something that y'all don't agree with, or if y'all want to say, well, we don't, we don't like the nine hundred, let's, let's do a thousand. Or, you know, maybe nine hundred's too big, let's do eight, or whatever the case may be, whatever y'all, you know, if y'all disagree with something. Um, or if y'all wanna add something, then y'all can with that, um, with those recommendations. And then they go back over to the board and mayor and Alderman for the final.
Yeah, just, you know, last year I did a, um, a study of recommendations we had had. And the average was over a thousand square feet.
People looking for the
Yeah, something over a thousand.
auxiliary building, yeah.
I, I didn't, I, I, I didn't remember the nine hundred, but I think I would suggest that maybe that ought to be larger. You know, but it's contingent upon the size of the main structure. That's the governing thing. And then
Right.
The percentage not to exceed, but that's, I don't think hardly ever comes into play. And then they talked about your recommendation.
Yes.
What happened to that?
So I had made a recommendation, just myself, to go over the board, um, to send to y'all that we enact or that we add fees to our zoning ordinance. Because as of right now, the only fees that we have are seventy-five dollars for a variance application and a hundred and forty dollars for a zoning change. We don't have anything for conditional uses. We don't have anything for subdivisions. We, we don't have anything else. Um, and honestly, seventy-five dollars really does not cover the cost for variances, conditional uses. And, and the RVs, there are no, no planning and zoning fees. There's no application fee for a RV. Only the hundred dollar permit after they get approved. So, you know, there's, there's hardly any fees. We're losing a lot of money in planning and zoning with the applications that I'm taking in. And the city is coming out of pocket for those costs. So I told them that we, you know, I'd like to incorporate fees, and they said they wanted to wait for the budget here. Okay, got it. It's only a couple more months. But the other change that I made was, uh, to change, uh, the square footage requirement for a single-family lot from twelve thousand to ten thousand. Because most properties are a hundred foot deep, not a hundred and twenty. So it would be a hundred by hundred. It wouldn't change the frontage, it'd just change the depth. So it would be ten thousand square feet instead of twelve. Um, the other change that I requested was that for
They took no action on that, right?
The ten thousand, they did.
Yeah, I think they approved it.
They approved the ten thousand. Now, the other, they did not take action on the fees, because they, they
That's what I've been, yeah.
Yeah.
I need to get that.
The other recommendation that I made was to decrease the square footage requirement for duplexes to be seventy-five hundred instead of eighty-five hundred. Um, because triplexes and everything else is seventy-five, is seven thousand. So I was like, well, if we just take it down a notch for the duplexes and then just increase it to seventy-five hundred for, um, well, no, it was seven thousand for multifamily, like apartments and up. And then triplexes and fourplexes, multifamily, up to twelve units was, um, seventy-five hundred. So I said, well, let's just make everything seventy-five hundred. Anything other than single-family residential, R-two, R-three apartment complexes, everything will be seventy-five hundred square feet per living unit. Just make it all easy. And they, they agreed on that.
So like you said, these will have to be advertised and they'll come back to us and we will
Vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Further them along. With any recommendations. And that, I think, is all of my comments and your comments. Anybody else have any comments?
No.
The wives don't have any comments, other than we're late, need to go home.
Yeah, they also, um, they also added the minimum square footage of a house. A single-family house is eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, it was, it was something
Six forty or something.
Before, I don't, I don't remember.
Four twenty-five is
Four twenty-five.
Oh, okay. So they are, that's gonna be
Not in the zoning ordinance, that's per building code.
Oh.
Yeah, they don't have anything in the zoning ordinance for a minimum square footage of a single-family house. So for a single-family living space, they've made the minimum eight hundred square feet.
So that should come back to us in about a month, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that'll take up a lot of time that month, that meeting, um, so anyhow.
That will be the September eighteenth meeting.
Yeah. So like I say, maybe on next Monday, we can try to expedite some of these comprehensive plan and attach, you know, get moving on that a little bit while we have some time.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, suggestions? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by one, seconded by
Two.
Two, vote one, yes, two, yes, three, yes.
Yes, okay.
And as we are adjourned. Thank you, John. Thank you, John. You'll have one next Monday, maybe.
All righty. Well, at least you hear me on that.